Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the City Council of Temple City for October 17th, 2023 to order. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protan Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. Next, tonight, we have an invocation provided by Pastor Patrick MacIsca III from One Hope at First Baptist Church of Temple City located at 6019 Baldwin Avenue. Pastor MacIsca has 25 years of pastoral and Christian teaching ministry experience. He served as a theology teacher and speech and debate coach at Marinatha High School in Pasadena for 25 years before accepting the call of full-time senior pastor of One Hope at First Baptist Temple City in February of this year.
Wow.
He has been serving as a senior pastor for six months, seven months by, actually, seven months by October 3rd, and he is seeking to make connections with the Temple City and Arcadia areas to help meet ministry needs. Services are Sunday mornings at 10:30 a.m., and it is also livestreamed on YouTube on their website, onehoptemplicity.org, and they also have Wednesday evening service from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and they will run until December 13th. They also have a children's choir that meets in the Pacesetters Room on campus at the same times as their Wednesday evenings. And their next big outreach is the church's annual harvest fair on Saturday, October 28th at, from 4, at 4:00 p.m.
Yes.
At 6019 South Baldwin. So Pastor, it's a privilege to have you here. Please rise for the invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to begin the meeting with prayer. And Lord, I would pray, as they begin, that this would be an evening of unity, that they would be able to see eye to eye on many of the pressing issues that they're going to be discussing, that, that our issues, that our community faces. Lord, I know full well that, as a pastor of a local church here, that as the community flourishes, so our ministry flourishes, and I look forward to ways to partnering with the officials in our community and the teachers in our community, and then those in the area to be able to do effective ministry here, Lord. And so, Lord, as we look for ways to partner together, may they know that they're continually being supported in prayer, and if there's anything I can do as local pastor, that I'd be able to come alongside them and encourage them and build them up. Lord, we pray for those in our community that are hurting, those that are homeless, and those that are addicted to drugs and alcohol, those that I'm facing as I just walk our streets. Lord, we pray for them, and we pray for your intervention to come alongside and heal them. Lord, again, we grateful for this, this opportunity, and we look to, to see in the future, and as well as the present, that this community does well. So, Lord, we dedicate this evening to you. May you be with our words and our conversation and the decisions and the results. We give everything into your hands this evening. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor.
For the pledge, I'd like to ask our City Manager Cook to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please call out for me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we do not have any ceremonial matters tonight, and we move on to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. We do have several persons who would like to address the City Council. First, I would like to call up Mr. James Patterson.
If, are you able to reach the podium? Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, again, my name is James Patterson. I am one of the three pastors at the Temple City Seventh-day Adventist Church, and this month, on the 29th, we're having what we call a, a health clinic for the community. And some of the things we're going to be having, we'll have dental screening, dental cleaning, body massage, hydrotherapy, skin tag removal, mental health consultation, COVID and flu shots, vaccinations will be available, ultrasound exams for men and women, health screening tests for cholesterol, uric acid, glucose, vision, blood pressure. There'll be free haircuts for men, free haircuts for women, foot care therapy, manicures, and the food bank will be open, and there'll be groceries available for those that are in need. And because this is Breast Cancer Month, City of Hope will be bringing in a blood mobile, and they will be doing, what do they call them, blood donations. And we are so thankful that we're able to do that this year. Last year, we did it right about the same time, but we didn't have quite as much going on. And so this year, it's a little bit more together. We have licensed doctors, licensed nurses, so it's not just a bunch of people doing things. But these are real people, and they're going to be dealing with real issues. And if you have an issue that they come up with, they find out during their testing, that they will make referrals to hospitals or to other doctors that can take care of them. And since this is our city, we want everyone to be there, and if there's anything else we can do, we certainly want to do that. And so I thank you for this time, and I hope to see all of you. I know I'll see you at Veterans Day, but this is one of our great times of the year, and we thank you for this opportunity.
Sure. Thank you. I think Mayor Protan-
Would you tell, what were the, what are the hours?
Hours, I'm sorry. This is Sunday, October 29th, and it'll be from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
And which church is it?
Temple City Seventh-day Adventist Church, and we're in 9664 Broadway.
Okay.
And do people have to make a reservation for the shots, or maybe just walk up?
No, just come up. Great.
So, curious, Pastor, so is the Seventh-day Adventist Church doing it? Are you, you said the, are you partnering City of Hope as well, or is that how?
No, no, I'm one of the pastors at the church.
No, I meant, who is doing all the screening? Is that a hospital or clinic?
Oh, these are all local doctors and nurses and local medical facilities.
Oh, wow. Okay. Great job.
So they bring in their equipment over, and we're setting up, and they're going to do their thing.
All right.
All right. Well, thank, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right. Next, we have Margot, I'm sorry about you butchering this, Pelevanos?
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Margot Pelevanos. I am a retired school administrator and a proud resident of Temple City since 1977. I would like to comment on residential construction sites where porter potties and construction debris and open trailers of trash are spread out on front yawns, on their front lawn. This is an unsightly appearance that takes place in Temple City, and I was informed that Temple City does not have an ordinance to require professionals and homeowner contractors to encase the front, their front lawn with a construction mess, mesh fence on their property. I personally have had to endure this situation with my direct neighbor. The whole block must pay the unsightly price for two years of construction. That's two Christmases, two Thanksgivings, and a multitude of celebrations with a porter potty next door to us in the front lawn. My husband is a retired construction worker, or had his own company, and always made sure that the neighbors were respected and not ever to be impacted by the construction. I went to the City Hall multiple times, they know me by sight, and described the situation on the property, and I was able to talk to the enforcement representative. It was there that I was informed that Temple City does not have or require homeowners or contractors to conceal their front lawn from porter potties and trash and construction debris. I would like this board to consider this unsightly construction nuisance and install an ordinance to remedy it. There are sloppy front, it is a sloppy front yard of construction that affects the integrity of our beautiful city. Thank you.
Just have a question, if you don't mind. Sorry, I didn't catch your last name, but was the construction, a brand-new construction, or was it a remodeling?
Remodel.
Where they kept remodels, so the front of the house was still there?
Yes.
I see.
But because of the driveway is so narrow, the porter potty had to be in front of the house. Where if I want to take pictures of my grandchildren, there's going to be a potty, porter potty in the picture in the background. And this, this should not be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly thank you for bringing this to our attention. I would ask that our City Manager, Mr. Brian Cook, will look into this matter further. If you don't mind, you didn't leave a contact information, if you can leave something with our City Clerk, Ms. Peggy Quo.
Yes.
The best way we can reach you.
Okay.
All right. Are there, is there anyone else who would like to address the City Council at this time? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and we move on to our consent calendar. All items may be approved in a single motion unless any council members would like to pull an item for discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we also have none. So tonight, we go straight to our update from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann. I'll be brief. Three public safety-related items. First, today, the LA County Sheriff's Department participated in an active shooter training at one of our sites at, we're near the Cloverleaf Bakery and Coffee Shop, and many of our deputies at Temple Station actually got hands-on training with active shooter scenarios. And so thank you to the neighborhood around. There were some blanks shot off during the day, and we tried to notice people in advance in the area, not to be concerned, but it was a good day in terms of that, and good training for our, the Temple Station Sheriff's deputies, who are our first responders in unfortunate incidents that do happen across the country. Second, we did have a coffee with a cop today. Thank you to McDonald's, and thank you to the general manager and all the team over there for that. Secondly, last week, the captain and I met with the rabbi at Temple Beth David to ensure the rabbi and others for some of the pronouncements that were made in the last few weeks about targets, generalized targeting of Jewish synagogues and facilities, that we are there, we are present, and the patrols are in those areas to actively watch out for anything. Obviously, no threats of, targeted threats whatsoever to Temple Beth David or any other facilities in Temple City, but so that they know that we are being diligent on our part, and our LA County Sheriff's Department, who's one of the best law enforcement and agencies in the entire country, will be there, and they appreciated our support and to make sure of their safety. That is it for my report tonight, sir.
Could you, could you hear anything, or do you have anything to share regarding the threats to the Catholic schools in the area?
That, thank you for mentioning that, Mayor Protan Chavez. That was a hoax. We, unfortunately, St. Luke's did evacuate, and so did several other Catholics and parochial schools throughout the San Gabriel Valley, but unfortunately, that turned out to be a hoax. So there is obviously a heightened sense of fear in many communities through this, throughout this country and throughout the world right now. And please be assured, and for the community, be assured, that our vigilance will always stay strong and is always steadfast in our approach to protecting the community.
My only concern is that even, even though it turned out to be a hoax, the only, the only way I heard about it was through an announcement from the school district. I didn't hear anything from the city or the sheriff go out on that at all to us. So I would imagine that we would have been, we had information on that, or maybe we didn't. I don't know.
It was a generalized, it was a general email that went out to hundreds of schools throughout the San-
No, but I mean, no one, no one from the city or from the school, no one from the city or the Sheriff Department notified, for example, the council members of this. And I, like I said, I, the only reason I heard about it was through the school district. So I would hope that in the future, especially as sensitive these issues are, that somebody would at least keep us in the loop when these things happen.
Certainly.
You know, and I understand, there's a lot of crazy people out in the world today, and, you know, we've seen this happen before, but unfortunately, you have to take everything for its worth, and you have to treat it as credible until you know it's not. So, anyway, just FYI, that it would, it would be nice to hear from, from our side.
We will always do better. I think that's it for my report tonight, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next, update from our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, two bills to report on tonight, both of which have been signed by the Governor. The first, Assembly Bill 965, is intended to speed the deployment of small cell wireless, which, as the council will remember, has been something that the telecom industry has been pushing very hard. This bill is not a planning issue for the Community Development Department, but more of a public works issue in that it only applies to small cells in the right-of-way. And it's, it does a lot of small things, but the big thing it does is allow what they're calling batches of applications of up to 50 sites within the right-of-way in a single jurisdiction. Now, Temple City's not going to have 50 within our jurisdiction all at one time, but a telecom provider could come in and seek to put a larger number of sites rather than one at a time. So I will be working with staff on our right-of-way ordinance to see what kinds of assurances we can keep for the community to let them know that we are protecting the aesthetics, protecting against these encroaching into ADA pathways on the sidewalk with the ground-mounted equipment. It's fairly new, and, and the sort of state expert attorney on this is a man named Jonathan Kramer, and he's been writing about it the last couple of days. So we'll be looking into it, and I would not be surprised to have an ordinance come back early in, in 2024 for adoption.
Can I have a quick?
I'm not sure I know what you're talking about.
Sure, no problem. So in the past, cell phones, cell towers were gigantic things that went on private property, like the one out here.
They looked like trees and stuff like that.
Right. The one out here, the one up by the 7-Eleven. Now what they're doing is putting smaller pieces of equipment on streetlights or on traffic signals or other things in the right-of-way. The federal government and then the state government kind of gave in to the telecom industry and said, yes, that's a good place to put them, because the poles are already there, and if you're going to do something small, that makes sense. The only real regulation we have is aesthetic, and then, as I say, blocking the sidewalk with the ground equipment. But we're going to look into our ordinance to make sure it's as good as we can make it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protan, did you have a question?
Uh, no. Okay.
Yeah, actually, are you talking about this would be a by right kind of installation? Other than, do we still have discretionary review on, on these?
These, we wouldn't have discretionary review. We'd have to grant licenses. If it's our equipment, if it's the city's equipment, you have a lot more control over it. If it were, say, Edison poles in the city, we have a lot less, and it's, it's not completely by right, but it's pretty close to that.
What if it's our pole?
If it's our pole, we still have some rights as property owner to say yes or no. But if we say no, then the downside to saying no, and this is in AB 965, this is existing law, the downside to saying no is then they have the right to seek to put up a new pole in the right-of-way. So you're actually better off saying yes and getting some lease revenue from them rather than them coming in and saying, well, if you say no, then under state law, we have the right to put up a new pole. We certainly don't want that. So as I say, we're going to work through what our ordinance says right now and make sure that we get it up to speed as the new year comes and this becomes active.
Thank you. You have a question? So would it be fair to say that one of these companies could contact Edison, get their okay to put a piece of equipment on their pole without telling us or doing?
No, they'd still have to come in.
Okay.
And they'd still have to get approval from the city, but it basically is a staff-level approval that wouldn't come, certainly not to the Planning Commission, because as I said, this is a right-of-way issue, but it doesn't come to council. And I don't know that we've had any of them in Temple City yet.
There have been inquiries in the past related to different types of smaller types of, of equipment, but nothing that has come en masse or anything significant in the last 12 to 24 months.
So if it goes on the Edison pole, who gets, who gets the income from that?
If it goes on Edison, Paul Edison would. If it goes on the city's pole, the city would. The second bill is Assembly Bill 10, yes, sir?
One more, Mr. Murphy. So, you know, most people probably don't realize how much wind load these things carry in the structural loads, so I would imagine our regulation would take into account that they need to come and show that the pole and the foundation system and all that is capable of, of withstanding that. Because that was, you know, way back when, when the windstorm, right?
Doesn't this remind you of the problem we had with the windstorms?
Yeah.
When they were, I think it was cable TV was overloading the poles.
Yes.
Nobody ever did anything about it until it was too late.
Exactly.
This sounds like this is a lead-up to that situation as well, which makes no sense whatsoever.
Yep. And I also have, have a question. So if, my understanding is that wireless facilities fall under the purview of the federal FCC. So why is this, is there a state bill that comes into play? Like, how, how does that intersect with federal law?
So the, the federal law gives, the FCC's, not so much statutes as their regulations, continue to maintain some level of local control state by state or even to localities. State of California then takes the control given to local jurisdictions, assumes it for itself, and then tells us how these things will be rolling out, with things like, you've probably heard the term "shot clock," things like that. And so they're telling us not so much radiation frequencies or scientific parts, but the procedural steps. That's where the State of California is really making its mark on, on this industry.
Okay. So more, more to come.
More to come, for sure.
Thank you.
The second is Assembly Bill 1033. This has been big in the last two or three days. This is an accessory dwelling unit-related item that allows, and don't freak out on me, allows the accessory dwelling unit to be essentially condoized and sold separately from the main residence. Now, you will remember that under the original accessory dwelling unit law, and under every state accessory dwelling unit law up to AB 1033, the law has said that they may not be sold separately from the main residence. That was one of the things that was initially pushed. This could be a rental unit. This could be a, an in-law unit. This could be for the children that want to move back into town and have their children in the school district. Some of our state legislators from the Bay Area, seeing the way that accessory dwelling units are being kind of rolled out in their area, where in many cases, they are in a multi-unit building and have been carved out and added into that building, they now want them to be sold the way that the rest of the units can be sold. The great thing about this bill is that the local jurisdiction has to opt in. You have to affirmatively change your ordinance to say, yes, we want to allow this condoizing. We will be bringing to you, I talked to Mr. Reimers, he has an ADU sort of cleanup ordinance that he's going to bring late this year or early in the next year. We're actually going to do the opposite, unless we get individual comments from you that you want to go this way. We're actually going to do the opposite and affirmatively make our ordinance stronger in saying that, no, we don't want these sold separately. We want ADUs to remain with the main house under the initial reason for having them there. But this cannot be done without the city saying it's okay, at least for now. As you know, in many of the housing-related issues, the state will roll out a program and then will later on say, well, if you don't have anything completely to the contrary, now you have to allow it, because you didn't say no a year ago, or you didn't say no six months ago. So we want to make sure that you say no strongly, if that is the will of the council.
Greg, if you have, I thought some time ago, I had read and mentioned to the council that there was a bill, something similar, but it wasn't with ADUs. So if you had a multi-unit property, say you had a, a house behind you, that you could sell that home separate from the primary resident, is, is residence, is that still in place?
I don't know about that bill. This is the, this is the big one that's come through. So I, that one may have died on multiple large units on the same lot, where it's not a, an R2 scenario where it was built as-
A flag lot.
Right. Right.
Counselor, for you?
Oh. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I thought the bill said something like, it has to be something for the city to opt in when these units were constructed. So one of my questions is, does it, well, obviously, I don't know we're going to opt in, because we're not really opining on, on, on that yet.
Right.
But, but assume for a minute that, that we're opting in, so would it apply to units that's already been built? Or, and then, because I could see one of the issues that we'll be facing would be, when it, when the, because a lot of these ADUs have parking issues, but the assumption is that they're family, so family members can work it out. But now we're having strangers living side by side with one driveway, perhaps one garage.
One water line?
One water, I mean, just, I, I just could see a slew of issues, and especially now it became maybe, and, and, and wittily became the referee between two homeowners.
Right.
So just, seeing, assuming, just a lot of issues. So curious if there are anything that we could do even before the law takes into effect January 1st, 2024.
You know, I think it makes sense for Mr. Reimers and for our office to look at, what ADUs do we actually have built, and what would, how would, if we opted in, how would it affect those different properties? His department has a good record of where they've been built, how they've been built on the properties, they have all the plans. So that's something that we could look at and then come back to the council with. If you want to opt in or you don't want to opt in, maybe it's a matter of opting in, but under certain limitations, like there has to be a separate parking entrance, or, you know, you have the right, obviously, to build an ADU without the extra parking, but if you want to have been able to, or if you want to be able to sell it, maybe you have to have provided separate parking so that you don't have the problems that you're talking about. There's a lot to think about as we go forward. I think the key thing for us right now is, is the opt-in, so that we are not facing a rush to- I think the key thing for us right now is is the opt in so that we are not facing a rush to change an ordinance or a rush to make a decision. If we want to eventually allow it, we can study it well and then craft some conditions for allowing it. For everything that you say, sir.
It seems that if you allowed that to take place, you'd have a rush of people wanting to build ADUs because you can sell it as a condominium, separate ownership, make five hundred thousand dollars on an ADU that might have cost you, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars to build.
There are a lot of different thoughts about what it might mean for ADU development, for SB nine development, where it in some circumstances might decrease the desire for somebody to do an SB nine development because of the way that the lot splits work. So there are a lot of different policy considerations. The big concern when it came out was that we were going to have to act or if we didn't act, people would start selling them. The good news is we don't have to act. We can sit back for now and then make, bring to you different policy considerations. You can make the policy decision you want to make and we'll have a strong ordinance in place at sometime next year that reflects what you all want.
It seems to be another example of state legislators coming up with what they think is a great idea but not figuring out what to do once we have it in place. I could see a number of problems that come up. First of all, has the assessor's office even weighed in on any of this? What are they, how are they going to determine what taxes to collect and on what piece of property to collect it on? So, you know, each piece of property, each piece of real property has an assessor's parcel number, which goes with that property. So now when they start selling things, somebody's going to have to figure out, okay, what is it that's actually being sold? And give it a new parcel number, I'm assuming, and then base the taxes on that. So that, who's going to be doing that? Assessor's office is so overworked right now, I'm sure they want no part of this. You know, surveyor, I mean, it just, to me, it's like, really, this is what you want to do? And I I just don't get it. And Greg, what briefly, what do you think the rationale for this new law is? Is it basically to to make money for somebody? I mean, obviously, as 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 Councilmember Sternquist mentioned, people who do own an ADU or have an ADU on their property, when told, hey, by the way, you can sell that now, they're looking at the dollar signs because they built the ADU for a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. And now in Temple City or whoever allows these, if their if their property values are high, they're going to be able to make quite a profit on something like that. And like you said, the it it completely is against the original idea of ADUs. And that is to help the families that are living there to, and and that has, but now it's like, well, you can just sell it to a stranger. You know, and 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 does it come with a yard? And and, you know, where does that come in? Because we, right now, on our ADUs, I know we have certain limitations that they don't have to have certain things.
And do you reduce the the tax base for the original house?
Well, and that's that's another thing, shouldn't it go down because they don't, they have the same amount of property anyway?
Right.
So what a mess. I mean, and this is already passed, though.
This is already passed, and I honestly, I think, I think the impetus for this doesn't come from the Temple City scenario. It it comes from the scenario, you know, as you have said, and I I kind of alluded to as well. ADUs were started as you have a single family home with extra space. You can build a rental unit or you can build a second unit for some extended family. Both of those increase the housing supply and they have different purposes. After that went through, and remember, it started with if you have a single family home, you can do this. Then they also added duplexes and they also added multifamily. As they went along, you had things like an ADU could be constructed in a boiler room in a multifamily, you know, development. Well, now, in parts of the state, not the Temple City scenario, they're looking at maybe a fourplex that has added an ADU. That fourplex, they could put a condo map on, you know, under the subdivision map act. They could condoize the fourplex, but if the ADU can't be sold as a separate unit, it would have to be attached to one of the four and and rent it out. A large building, ten units, that that does have an ADU in some extra space. Well, why couldn't that be condoized as an eleventh unit? The unfortunate thing is, as you've said, they don't think about all of the outcomes and they don't think about some of suburban Southern California where ADUs are being used for the intended purpose. But now you might have that neighbor who's built one who moves away and whoever buys it says, great, I can condoize it. And to the council member's point, now you've got a single driveway that instead of being used by extended family has two condo neighbors who don't know each other.
Who's car is blocking whose car?
And who takes care of those things?
Right.
The maintenance issues and.
So in any event, I don't want you to worry about it now. I do want you to know that all these policy things, Mr. Reimers and I will work through and bring you a big list of which way does Temple City want to go.
Who sponsored this bill? It wasn't Weiner, was it?
It it was actually not. It sounds like one of his, truly.
That's okay.
No, I believe it was, I believe it was, it's Assembly, so Assembly Member Ting, also from the Bay Area?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It seems like these Bay Area legislators don't get out much and maybe travel to other areas to see.
I'm surprised they're doing it, it's so crowded there now.
Thank you for for that that update. I mean, I.
Thank you for the good news.
I I had a, I had a lot of questions myself, but I'm I'm sure you'll you'll cover it later. But I'll just say one thing, I I was thinking of, well, if you were able to sell an ADU off as a separate property, does that then become the primary residence? And then do you have this kind of domino effect of, okay, well, you, can you even differentiate between the primary residence and the ADU anymore? And, you know, all these host of issues with parking, utilities, it just goes goes on and on.
That's the problem is they create more questions than resolutions, but they don't. It's like, let's do it and then we'll worry about that later. That's that's a frustrating thing, I think, for cities like ourselves.
But at at least the good, the good news that you shared with us is that it requires a city to opt in for it to be effect, which really was the other question in my mind was, well, why does it need a state assembly bill to enable this? Why can't cities just go off on their own and say, hey, we we would like to do X within our own city? It doesn't have to be in the form of an assembly bill, so. But again, we don't, we can't read their minds. Anything else, Mr. Murphy? Okay, thank you. All right, next we move to council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? Okay, well, on on this note, I would actually propose that we disband the playground renovation ad hoc because I think our our role, our work is done. So.
I thought they were coming back for, I thought they were still going to come back to the ad hoc committee with some other recommendations that we didn't fully flesh out in our last meeting. We're talking about the two parks, right? Yeah, I I seem to remember that they were going to come back.
I think it was the. We kicked like the to the Parks and Rec Commission to look at the color, maybe.
Okay, so.
But nothing that would have changed.
Nothing substantial.
All right.
Yeah. I I think if if there were anything, it would be brought back before the entire council.
Before Council Two is brought here.
So I I don't think the ad hoc is needed if Councilmember Sternquist concurs. Okay, so we will, we will disband that ad hoc. Okay, next we move on to council items separate from the regular agenda, starting with, why don't we start on this side with Councilmember Viscara?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, you?
I would concur with Councilmember Viscar.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing to add.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Couple of things. I want to thank you for coming out tonight to talk about the debris in the front yard. I actually had a similar situation down the street from me and called Brian and said, I don't know what's going on, but I'm not living up the street from a place with a mess. They were remodeling and they dumped everything on the front yard, everything that came out of the house on the front yard and then left it there overnight. And so Brian worked with them and they came in the morning to take the debris away. But two years is a long time, so I'm sure Brian can help you and work something to see what's going on there. I didn't know this until Brian happened to mention it, mention it, maybe some of you had already heard, but I was curious about the dairy, the dairy on Las Tunas. And I might have missed this, but it's a going to be a seven, it's in plan check to become a seven leaves, is it?
Dairy, it's going to planning, it's going back to planning commission to be a four-leaves drive-through boba.
Seven, seven leaves.
Seven leaves, excuse me, thank you.
Was that rejected by the planning commission and now it's being brought back to them as?
There were some concerns in the planning commission about the drive-through aspects of it. They've asked for seven leaves to come back and take a look at some of the drive-through aspects. They should be coming back to the planning commission with some of those mitigation measures.
Yeah, because if anybody wants to drive up Baldwin Avenue.
See, that's what I.
At the boba place that's right there, where is it?
It's.
I have almost got killed there.
Yeah, next to Aldi's. That is, that is a mess.
I mentioned that also.
They're they're looking at, seven leaves is looking at mitigation measures to to address those, some of the concerns of the planning commission.
And then one last thing, I wasn't sure when I left the meeting and I thought I'd wait until this evening. But when we talked about the Las Tunas upgrades and the banners, were we, I'm hopeful that we might be able to put some holiday banners up this season. Did we think about doing that for the season or we said we're just going to wait until the city manager gets in touch with Sharon and the group for the Blue Star banners?
Those were two separate issues. I don't know if we have a plan for what's going to go up there next. I'm assuming that the hundred-year anniversary banners are going to hang there for a little while.
Yeah.
They are going to hang there for a little while, but.
Okay, so as long as that's going to stay there for a while.
Yeah, and and I, and we we left that meeting with the direction that we would be reaching out and working with the Blue Star Banner Group to come up with a permanent solution, a transition plan, so I would, I mean.
So possibly not this holiday season.
Maybe city manager could clarify, but I don't think we would make it for the season.
What you just stated, Mayor Mano, is what what the direction was.
But we we will be, I I'm sure after, we will be asking for an update on that in the coming coming months. Well, I I would say hopefully we have some update by the next council meeting, first week of November to see where that communication is going.
Absolutely.
Just because that's certainly something we want to move along.
I asked Brian if there was a possibility, maybe working with Adam, to see if there can be some enhancement for the lights on Temple City Boulevard to just do something different. I mean, we pretty much just wrap the the bottom of the trees and do something that looks a little bit more holiday as some of the other cities around us have. So Brian said you possibly would look into that.
We'll try to look, again, with the limitations that we have with the current configuration of the bull, of the electrical and other stuff, but we'll try to look. I know we've done a few things to enhance the experience with lights on Temple City, especially around the gazebo and other stuff like that. We'll try to look for smaller enhancements to to try to make little improvements here and there.
Are there power outlets on the trees and stuff downtown?
Yes, there are, that's how the lights, the the lighting is actually up, the electricals at the base.
Where we pull the breaker to.
So we'll look for little enhancements here and there.
And and if you could just check with Adam to see if they would reach out to the businesses. I know when the businesses did the home decorating contest, it enhanced the boulevard also. So if they do both the business and the residential, then we should have some enhancement anyway.
Well, that would be something I think that maybe we'd get the chamber involved in too.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Maybe have a contest.
Yeah, something. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Chavez.
Just a couple of quick things. So we do have the last neighborhood watch on Thursday.
Thank you for reminding.
At Clementson, so last one of the year, so hopefully everyone can get out there. It's usually a pretty well-attended meeting at Clementson, so get out there and last opportunity to get tacos for the.
This Thursday?
This coming Thursday, yeah, Thursday. Five thirty, five thirty.
Five thirty, yes, sir.
Do we have a, it's not the same night we have our standing committee, but.
No.
No, that's different, okay. But that's.
I think that's the following.
And then, and then I kind of echo the Councilmember Sternquist's concerns about, to me, it's hard to believe that we have no ordinance as to address these construction issues that were brought for us tonight. I I find it hard to believe that it's not something that we can do. I mean, I I I express same concerns that nobody should have to live, you know, two years next to a construction site with with the noise and the and the trash and whatever else is going on there. There's there's some some disconnect there between either the city or the contractor. And so I I would strongly recommend that we look into that and see if we are lacking in that area, what we can do to to bring it up. Because I'm sure we're not the only city that experiences these things. And so we, maybe we, that's one of the areas we need to kind of bring up to date or even educate some of our contractors when they do apply for their permits to do this work, you know, what they can and cannot do. I always thought that, I I still think, I know we looked at this issue before, about how early they can start and when they can end, and I personally feel that the hours are too long, but of course, everybody has their own opinion on that. But, yeah, but these kind of issues, I I thought I remember, Vince, maybe you, you were implying about the placement of the porta potties, I thought they had to be out, out of the.
I don't believe they're.
Or they can just plop them right in the front yard.
Yeah, I I think we're, and that's why I asked the question, I think there are enough regulations to govern new construction. But the question is, because it's.
The remodel, maybe there's different.
So let's say if you have your house and you're building in the back, it would be very unreasonable for the city to say, go fence up your front yard. Now you don't have a view from your living room. So so whereas I think maybe the question would be on the porta potty maybe needing some additional work regulation-wise, and also I think there's enough regulation right now to tell people not to put trash in the front yard, so.
It could be, and it could partly be an enforcement issue too, rather than a ordinance issue. So that's something that certainly we have the power to take care of, so.
I see a lot of sites that that seem to do temporary fencing with the green netting and.
New construction.
You see that, I think, you see that mostly on commercial and new construction.
But why can't they do that on remodels?
Well, because I think the question is if you are living the house still, would it be too much? You asked you to put a fence in front of your house, now you can't see, you can't drive out, you know, so. But I think it's a, but as far as porta potty, on the other hand, I think that's a different question. A porta potty has to be close because they service it, they have to be able to reach it. So it has to be in the front, but maybe they'll be, maybe they still can fence it off, you know, so.
Well, it's something we need to look at.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, yeah, in addition to, I thank you for mentioning Neighborhood Watch. Also, the following week, we have our monthly law enforcement meeting with the sheriffs. That's Wednesday morning, October twenty-fifth at seven AM, bright and early. Also, tomorrow, speaking at the Chamber, we we do have a, the Chamber is holding a mixer at the Women's Club tomorrow at five thirty PM, they're calling it Temple City Ignites. So please join if you can.
Is there food, food?
That's a good question, I'm not, they usually do serve something there, but I don't, I don't think it's a full meal.
What?
The the Chamber event tomorrow at the Women's Club.
Oh.
At five thirty. They usually have some light refreshments, but it's not like a full dinner. And and our Chamber has been a lot more active with a lot of legislative roundtables and events, so I I do urge everyone to support them when when we get a chance.
How did the the meeting with Barker go? That's been since our last meeting, I think.
Yeah, it went.
I know you were there and I think you were there.
I was there.
Yeah, it went pretty well.
It was.
She, you know, she's. She, you know, she's, she's a-
What does she think?
Her top two things that she talks about is public safety and homelessness. So she says, I'm paraphrasing what she said, but when she was first elected, she said those were the top two issues that her constituents identified, and fast forward to today, those are still, that's, those two issues still remain the top two concerns.
She spoke about Care Court.
She did.
She did.
I sent you that link.
You did, thank you.
Remember, Greg, you mentioned that last time, there was a link in the, on, I think? No, it's a, it's a, it's a, what is it, a video or a Zoom meeting that, that talks about that that's coming up?
Yeah, I'm going to watch that.
And also, not this Thursday, but the, the following Thursday on October 26th, there will be a fundraiser for the, the late Deputy Klinkenboomer, who was unfortunately and tragically murdered outside Palmdale Station recently. So as part of the Temple Station family, please, please do support that cause.
Is that the same?
It's at 11:00 AM.
Is that the same group that did the last one, or is it different?
Yeah, Baja Cali will be doing tacos again.
Okay, good.
As they've done, unfortunately, for two fundraisers for some fallen officers in the last few years.
And also, just, just in, in conclusion, I know a lot of, city manager Cook mentioned earlier some of the heightened threats and risks that our sheriff is addressing surrounding our neighbors and, and our constituents in the Jewish community. So a, a, as a council, we, we want everyone to know that we take that very seriously, and I know that Captain Mesa and the Temple Station also take those threats very seriously. And, you know, no, nobody should be fearful of threats and attacks from organizations that don't value human life at all. And so we, we extend our, our prayers and condolences to everyone who has been affected by the senseless and tragic killings of civilians, of children, of family in, in the, in Israel and the Middle East. So, you know, I don't always like to end on a somber note, but I think it is worth mentioning that we, as a community, don't tolerate any kind of antisemitism, racism of any kind.
And William, you want to talk about the resolution?
Oh, yes, thank, thank you for reminding us. And, you know, not, not too long ago, our, our council actually did pass a resolution unanimously condemning antisemitism across, not just, not just in our community, but across the world. And it was part of a, a larger effort by many, many cities and organized by a lot of Jewish organizations, not just here in Southern California, but across the nation. So, and I thank, thank you for reminding us of that, and, you know, this is just in addition to what we've already done and said on, on that issue.
I guess, and my law partner has, is, is Jewish, and he belongs to synagogue in Pasadena, he said that they have 24-hour guards now.
Wow.
At where? In Pasadena, synagogue in Pasadena. I'm not sure, I think they have two synagogues, two in Pasadena, yeah, but I forget which one he goes to, but, yeah, he said it's just 24 hours now.
Yeah.
All right, well, anyway, there are, let's see, there is one more item here, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment, and we are adjourned for the evening. Good night.